Okey dokey, I call the meeting of August 23rd, August 23rd, my goodness, what the heck's going on around here? Well, it's all, it's nice to see everybody here today. I call the meeting of September 27th, September 27th, a fine day, right? Member Chaplain, I call this meeting of September 27th, 2022, of the DuPage County Board to order, and may I ask, Member Chaplain, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge, and then everyone, please remain standing for the invocation? We are so pleased to, uh, to welcome our, uh, invocator Patricia Stovall from DuPage AME, uh, who will lead us, uh, in a thoughtful reflection and prayer invocation, please, Patricia Stovall.
Okay, let us bow heads. Almighty God, the head of all of our lives, I thank you for bringing us to this gathering today. Help us to obey your command to some, and to submit ourselves to our leaders and our government for your sake. Help us to give honor and respect to our leaders, not just the ones we like, but even those we consider unreasonable or unprincipled. Remind us that the governmental authorities that exist have been appointed by you, and that to resist our leaders is to oppose what you have set, set in place. Help us to give respect to whom respect is due. That include those who are gathered here today for this meeting. I pray your blessings upon it. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, that was awesome. It was just fine. Yeah, just Patricia, uh, our scheduled invocator was now unable to make it, so Patricia stepped in and did a fabulous shot. Uh, Mr. Clerk, or Mr. Chad Pierce, would you please call the roll?
Member Chaplain.
Here.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Schorzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
We have a quorum. So, uh, on the order of chairman's report, it is, uh, my, uh, duty and my honor, uh, to present to you uh, our budget. And so with that, I want to wish everybody a good morning. I want to welcome Amy Phillips, there she is. Uh, thank you all for joining me today for what is my 12th and final budget address before the DuPage County Board. And, uh, I'll tell you the truth, of course, I always tell you the truth, but, uh, this year's message is, uh, certainly easier to deliver than my first budget address. Uh, you may note that I took office as our county grappled with the effects of the Great Recession. And, uh, I'm leaving office as our county emerges from a global pandemic. Now that I think about it, it's, uh, not exactly how I thought I'd be filling out my resume. But these difficult times sharpened our vision as we focused on our priorities. We strengthened our resolve to find new ways to provide outstanding service to our residents. As the person who led our county through these, uh, tremendous challenges, working together with our team here, uh, I think I, I can offer a valuable perspective, if I may. Many of you in this room will be the ones making the important decisions for the DuPage County Board and DuPage County Government and the county, our community, moving forward. As I lay out my budget proposal, I hope you will see that my goal is, and has always been, to leave this office and our county better than I found it. More importantly, I believe that if you approve of this plan, together we will lay a strong foundation for stability and economic growth. Our legacy will be one of sound financial footing benefiting the next generation. My hope is that those who replace me, and, and someday you, uh, will, uh, do the following, one, uphold our commitment to providing value for each and every tax dollar we collect. Two, maintain a conservative cautious approach to spending. Three, pay down debt as soon as possible. Four, seek to collaborate and consolidate services to save money. Five, maintain healthy fund balances, planning for a rainy day so that even in an emergency, we can keep taxes low, reduce financial burdens wherever possible on our residents, allowing them to support their families and prosper. That has always been my vision. Let me outline how in the year ahead, we will maintain our mission and realize this vision while making the best possible use of the resources available, or more simply, what are our plans? How do they impact people? And how will we pay for them? We can't talk about where we will go until we understand where we are as we anticipate the end of fiscal year 2022. When I proposed my, our fiscal year 22 budget a year ago, we anticipated our general fund revenue would come in at nearly $210 million. This figure is comprised of our sales, property, and other taxes collected, as well as fees, fines, investment, and other sources of income. However, we are now projecting we will end the year with more than $240 million in revenue collected. This is attributable to strong performance in sales and other tax income. It is also due, uh, undeniably to our history and current practice of fiscal conservatism. Our elected officials and county departments were projected to spend about $210 million of general fund revenues. However, we now project those expenditures will total approximately 200 million, coming in about 10, $10 million under budget. That means we are projecting a $40 million surplus for fiscal year 2022. Together with our county staff, we've identified some of the most pressing needs of our residents, and we will plan for the future. We will expend some of this $40 million surplus to benefit our residents and eliminate millions of dollars in burden on future budget, uh, budgets. For example, I'm proud that we will undertake the first major renovation of the DuPage Care Center in more than three decades. Despite rising costs, this county board has demonstrated a commitment to significant upgrades that will greatly increase the quality of life for our elderly and disabled care center friends and neighbors. As you know, our care center can house more than 360 people, providing long-term medical care and short-term rehabilitative services for patients, most of whom are dependent on Medicaid funding. We will allow 3 million in FY 2022 surplus revenue as part of the funding stream to ensure this project is completed by the end of 2025. The people in this project are those who need our help the most now and for the next generation. This is exactly the type of infrastructure investment we should be making to reduce future spending needs and to benefit our people now and 30 years from now. Utilizing funds from FY 2022, we will reduce the needs to allocate to next year's budget in the area of tort liability, shoring up, shoring it up with about $2.5 million. We'll add to our much-needed vehicle replacement fund, ensuring that we can purchase and hopefully obtain needed vehicles in a timely manner, uh, adding 3.25 million to that fund, allowing for purchases in both 2023 and 2024. Additionally, we will make a shift in the allocation of RTA sales tax, dedicating 2 million to the transportation infrastructure fund that would provide, one, roadway improvements emphasizing safety and congestion relief, two, enhanced pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and three, support transit improvements. We will plan for replacing our, our enterprise resource planning system, ERP, our financial system, which is nearing its end of life, setting aside $6 million, essentially prepaying on future needs. These allocations are essential, as I have learned, and during lean times, often these expenditures have been reduced as we have always focused on the delivery of public services. Now, we can optimize these investments, ensuring that even in lean times, we can afford to replace our vehicles and maintain our obligations without fear of emergency expenditures hijacking future budgets. Additionally, we will invest another $250,000 in our popular DuPage County Neighborhood Revitalization Program, or as we like to call it, our Clean and Lean Program. We invested $125,000 in this program, program back in 2016 to empower our building and zoning staff to work with property owners to repair or remove dilapidated or abandoned buildings in unincorporated areas. Over the past six years, our revitalization program has been responsible for cleaning up over 107 properties throughout DuPage County. An infusion of 250,000 will make the program self-sustaining as restored properties can be sold and funding will allow county attorneys to recover costs in court. As Development Committee Chair Sam Tornatori can tell us, the people, the people in this program are the neighbors who thank us for prioritizing safety, improving and restoring property values to the communities impacted. This is an investment that will pay dividends and improve DuPage County long into the future. I just mentioned safety as it relates to our homes and neighborhoods. Nothing, nothing is more important to me than the health and safety of our residents. Significant portion of our county budget is dedicated to public safety, criminal justice, and court services. We must plan proactively for the needs of our citizens who have been impacted by rising crime. For example, during FY 2023 budget presentations, State's Attorney Bob Berlin told us that in 2018, DuPage County charged four, a total of four vehicular hijacking cases. Last year, there were 17. Cases of unlawful use of weapon by a felon doubled in 2021 compared to 2019. And we are on track to show at least a 40% increase, a 40% increase in 2022. 74% of those cases, I am told reliably by our State's Attorney, were defendants from out of the county, more than half, 55% from Cook County. At the same time, we must acknowledge that Mr. Berlin's persistent and public pursuit of justice is working. His office consistently seeks appropriate stiff prison sentences for those found guilty of violent crimes. During his recent presentation, the State's Attorney reported reductions last year in armed and aggravated robberies in DuPage. As we know, over the Christmas holidays, police, the sheriff's office, and prosecutors responded swiftly, working tirelessly to bring charges pursuing million-dollar bonds set in the Oakbrook Mall shooting cases, just days following the incident. In January, we honored our DuPage Crime Lab, the staff there for working around the clock to process the critical evidence in the shooting. Our commitment to public safety has been stellar and has not wavered over the past 12 years of my administration. Our planning for 2023 included the important perspectives of State's Attorney Berlin, Public Defender Jeff York, Chief Judge Ken Popejoy, and Sheriff Jim Mendrick, who all shared the expected impact of Safe-T Act on their offices. As Judge Chief, uh, as Chief Judge Popejoy explained on January 1st, 2023, the law eliminates cash bond. It requires in-person evidentiary detention hearings seven days a week. As you know, to comply with other aspects of this Safe-T law, the county has invested 2.5 million last year in body worn camera system for the sheriff's office. To accommodate the budget needs expressed during presentations, my FY 2023 proposal fully funds the headcount requests from the State's Attorney, the Public Defender, the Sheriff Office, and the 18th Judicial Circuit. Additionally, we will utilize 5.4 million in our 2022 revenues to pay off the building improvements in the 501, 503, and 505 buildings to accommodate the 19.8 million in infrastructure needs approved by this board as we meet the county's need to comply with this Safe-T law. The people, the people we're talking about here, the people benefiting from this portion of my budget proposal, who are they? They're the victims, the accused, those on probation, the 1 million people who visit our courthouse every year, the professionals and staff of the county who will see caseloads and court activity increase. Thanks to the proactive approach of our elected officials and our ability to plan ahead, I feel confident DuPage County will continue to lead the way in matters of law enforcement, criminal justice, and court services in the state of Illinois. I've outlined just some of the ways we will expend revenues in FY 22 to take the pressure off our FY 23 budget and beyond. These efforts allow us to pursue improvements throughout the county that will make a permanent positive impact on our residents. Looking ahead to FY 23, this budget cycle, I received 235.9 million in general fund requests from departments and elected officials. In my past 12 years, during even the leanest of times, our elected officials and department heads have worked collaboratively to help us achieve a balanced budget. It's been a positive, engaging dialogue for the most part, and I thank those elected officials who once again have carefully reviewed their costs, providing our finance staff the necessary comparisons and research as we considered those requests. While our revenue picture is certainly better than it's been in years past, we must acknowledge the skyrocketing costs and supply chain interruptions that impact our ability to deliver services just as they have impacted the private sector. As a result, we saw rising estimates for commodities and some contractual services as our vendors are reflecting their higher costs of doing business. Our largest expenditure, of course, is on personnel, comprising almost 70% of our general fund budget. I previously discussed increases in headcount needed by the State's Attorney, Chief Judge, and the Sheriff's Office. In addition to requests to handle projects undertaken by various departments, our total headcount will increase by 10 positions in FY 2023. 10 positions. That said, I want to acknowledge those elected officials who've always cut or held off hiring in the past when times were lean, good team players, collaborators. And I also want to acknowledge two elected officials who this year came to the table with decreased headcounts. I want to commend Circuit Court Clerk Candace Adams. She produced, proposed a reduction of 13 full-time positions, and Recorder Kathleen Carrier, um, can reduce headcount by two, both describing increased efficiencies that they have achieved in their offices. That's DuPage County Government that we know and well, right? That we've, that we've worked with and we've, we've been able to embrace. Thank you for the welcome invoke, innovation, collaboration, and continuing high level of customer service your staff provides. Thank you, Circuit Court Clerk Candace Adams and Recorder Kathleen Carrier. Conversely, there was some difficulty creating an appropriate budget for the DuPage County Clerk's Office. As you know, we did not, we did not receive a budget proposal in a timely manner, nor in an appropriate format from that office. The deputy clerk did eventually propose a budget two weeks ago in Finance Committee. However, without the corresponding backup, the comparisons, the research, the presentation was woefully incomplete. Therefore, I have asked our finance staff to review the line items carefully. My proposed budget meets the needs of the clerk's office in a fair, responsible manner based on its history of expenditures. It considers the need to adequately, adequately fund the 2023 municipal election. In fact, my proposed budget provides an increase in the amount allotted compared to the amount the clerk spent to run the 2021 municipal election. So, I've outlined the requests we've received. Let's look at the projected revenue picture for 2023, 2023, and there are a couple of bright spots. First, we received $4.5 million shot in the arm, if you will, in the general fund when our animal services group informed us that they had raised more than the 4.5 million previously called for to complete their shelter expansion project. Earlier this year, they sought a county loan from the general fund to secure the project. Now, that loan agreement will be officially rescinded. Uh, it's not necessary, thanks to the animal services folks who officially beat their own fundraising deadline and goals. Um, I, I'm, uh, we are grateful to the donors, to Animal Services Committee Chairman Brian Kuduski for championing this important cause, and to our energetic staff who always seems to creatively meet the needs of our stray and surrendered animals who so desperately need their help. I thank you, and the 2023 budget thanks you as well. Uh, there's another silver lining I'd like to point out as we review the revenue forecast for FY 2023. We all heard that the Fed has raised interest rates in several instances this year to battle the rising inflation rate. Treasurer Gwen Henry has proactively capitalized on these changes, securing higher yields for county investments in the safe, secure investment vehicles that she's chosen. As a result, we can count on higher-than-expected interest income on the county's funds, thanks to Treasurer Gwen Henry's actions. Thank you, Gwen. For example, in FY 2023, investment income for the general fund is projected to be 1.6 million compared to 234,000 received in FY 2021 when the interest rates were lower. Thank you again to your careful, consistent approach, Treasurer Henry. We heard earlier this month from Marsh McLennan, the agency who acts as our benefit broker and provides competitive information and data on our employee benefit plans. Um, those plans include employee medical, prescription, dental, vision, and life insurance coverage, including our opt-out bonuses and surcharges. In FY 2023, our planned costs are expected to rise 9.3%. As we were reminded in the Marsh McLennan Report, over the past five years, thanks to a favorable performance of our health plans, we have only had to adjust employee contributions once in 2020 to keep pace with increasing costs. I want to underscore that this board and I have consistently worked to keep employee contributions as low as possible while my, while maintaining our 80-20 split for the planned costs with employees. Additionally, I would remind the board that last year, we instituted no changes to our plan designs despite increasing costs. My 2023 budget proposal calls for the county to absorb the expected increase in employee benefit costs, meaning our plan design and rate structure will remain intact with no increases to our employees for this fiscal year. Holding the line on our employees' costs for their benefits is important because, as I said previously, personnel is our largest expense. We value our well-trained, highly skilled, and professional employees, and we recognize the importance of retaining them in a very competitive market. We are also painfully aware of the impact high inflation rates have had on families, on our employee families. The fact is, everything costs more. Earlier this year, gas prices spiked. We were currently seeing prices for groceries and goods higher than we've seen in decades. We all feel it when we grab the receipt after filling up or checking out. Therefore, I propose a significant response. And this was, uh, we arrived at this approach after careful collaboration with all of you on the board. I propose a significant response in employee compensation to ensure that our employees can feed, house, and clothe themselves and their families. I want our DuPage County staff to know that we value their hard work, and we understand that these economic pressures are uniquely difficult at this time, and they call for bold action. Therefore, I propose, instead of our usual 2% cost of living increase, we offer a 4% cost of living increase to employees paid in December of '22. This figure is consistent with other COLAs being considered by the state of Illinois and several other collar counties. This year, I also propose a 2% wage merit pool of dollars to be awarded in accordance with county compensation policies in February of 2023. And finally, for our full-time employees earning $55,000 a year or less, I propose that we provide a one-time inflation adjustment divided over employees' 26 pay periods. Payments would vary based on income levels, with higher payments going to those employees who make less than $40,000. These payments come with performance requirements and other rules, and would only apply to non-union employees. Those who have declared for retirement would also be ineligible for the one-time payment. Uh, I would argue that this bold action is significant, and it is in, it's a significant investment in our people. These are our people, this is our team. This is why DuPage County, uh, is an award-winning unit of government. Our people, who are representing a serious commitment that the times require if we are to maintain high levels of service to our residents. People who live in DuPage County expect the streets to be paved, seniors to be protected, storm router projects to be completed, the streets to be safe, and the courts to be open and fully operational, that's what they expect. All that takes trained, engaged, and professional staff. I propose we make these investments now to safeguard resources we've already invested in our highly skilled people who deliver day after day on behalf of our DuPage residents. And now the bottom line, how will we pay for all of this? Well, I propose a balanced budget today of 239.6 million in the general fund with a total budget of 586 million. Very simply, our revenues are expected to increase next year and will absorb the costs I've outlined. As I mentioned previously, our FY 2023 budget benefits from better-than-expected revenue performance in FY 22. We expect strong performance in investments, as I described, and in sales tax in FY 2023. For example, based on performance this year, our projected sales tax revenue for FY 2023 is $21.9 million higher than the figure we projected for sales tax revenue just a year ago in our FY 2022 budget. DuPage County's government fund balance will remain healthy. Our IMRF pension obligations are fully funded for FY 2023. And we have planned for contingency levels should there be a need to spend to protect the health or safety of our residents. I mentioned the rising inflation rate earlier. The Illinois Department of Revenue advises that with a 7% growth in the inflation rate from December of 2020 to December of 2021, local governments may seek higher property taxes going to the cap at 5%. I'm sure some local governments will do just that. However, I propose that we, here in DuPage County, that we do not increase property taxes by the Consumer Price Index Rate, seeking only to include new construction growth, as we have done in the past, to equalize the burden on all of us. So, as part of my 2023 budget plan, I propose we keep the DuPage County property tax rate flat at less than 2% of the average homeowner, homeowner's property tax bill, capturing approximately 500,000 in new construction growth throughout the county. To summarize, our 2023 general fund is balanced at 239.6 million with a total budget of 586 million. We will not increase homeowner's property taxes in 2023. The property tax levy will be adjusted slightly by about 500,000, capturing new construction growth and equalizing the burden for everyone with no increases to those people. The DuPage County government portion of the average homeowner property tax bill will remain flat or slightly decrease in FY 2023. As I said at the outset, I've seen this county through some of its leanest times over the past 12 years. Those tough choices taught us to employ a careful, conservative fiscal outlook that has served us well. DuPage County maintains its AAA bond rating with two national rating agencies. We are recognized for our leadership and innovation. Please join me today in thanking our outstanding finance staff for the diligence and dedication this year and all my years of, uh, as, as chairman. I now turn this budget over to you, the county board, uh, for debate and consideration. I do know that we have had a fair amount of debate, consideration, collaboration to get to this point, and I thank all of you for that as well. Uh, as you do so, um, yes, as I submit this budget for your consideration, I simply ask that you remain good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, and that you maintain their trust and the integrity of our commitment to public service above all else. I've worked hard to build trust in this unit of government. I've had the great fortune to work with talented partners who join me in putting the public good first, first and foremost. I encourage you in the months and years ahead, to please, please follow this example. I encourage you in the months and years ahead, please, please follow this example. Our residents deserve only the best of us, their public servants. Thank you. There you have it. The 12th budget address. Uh, so now we move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. I'm advised that we have quite a few folks online. And, um, and we do have a few folks right here, right here in the room with us. So we're so fortunate. First and foremost, uh, we have Regina Brent. Now Regina's making her way up there. I do want to remind all those public commenters that, um, our rules require that your comments do not exceed three minutes and that the total time for all the public comments shall not exceed 30 minutes. And by my reading of the clock over there, it's about 10:35. Welcome Regina Brent.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board members. It's nice to see friends again. Every time I come here, I feel like I'm coming back home. So thank you for welcoming me. I'm coming to speak before you today regarding the no cash bail reform deal. I would just want you to know that I understand, I don't just understand, I don't condone, uh, crime. And I am very critical at times about the leadership of the Chicago area because I'm born and rooted from there and I know the difference between the two. I just want to say, as public servants, community leaders, and law enforcement, uh, we have a responsibility to make sure we keep the peace in the community. Fear mongering is not the answer to the problems. I can't say whether or not the cash bail bill is perfect or that the no cash bill for a reform bill is perfect. But I can say that we can get back to the drawing board and try to find out how we can resolve this situation for all parties concerned. I also want to say that that ad that was featured for 15 days on the TV, sometimes 15 days, 15 times a day, was very, very offensive to not only that woman who was victimized, but also women in general. And I say she was revictimised over and over and over again. And even it was, uh, supposed to have been, um, decided that the racism had taken place within that campaign ad by saying, by showing black men beating down white women. No one came to her rescue. It took me back to the days of slavery when black women were put on the auction board and were sold, raped, robbed, and sold at a retail price. Nobody came to their rescue. It also took me back to my own victimization. At a time in October 2009, I was in the ghetto. Most of us are from the ghetto. Our people are from the ghetto. I love the ghetto. I love my people. I stopped in a barber shop, October 2009, just to get a haircut, just to talk to my son. I was on a flip phone, closed it up. He says, Mom, where are you? I said, I'm in the ghetto, Terry, getting a haircut. He says, Mom, get out of there. Immediately, the door flew open. Three gunmen came in, stripped me down to my knees by my apron that was put across my neck, choking me, give me your money. They caught the owner, had him in a corner, beating him almost to death. They knew he had money. His partner at the shop had set him up. I'm on my knees. I'm in front of a glass case. The guy says to me, give me all your money. I said, take it. I have $40 in my purse. At that time, I'm shaking, he's shaking, he's got the gun to my head. But I realized once my face almost hit the glass case, he pulled me back. I knew I wasn't gonna die. I said, please, let me save your life instead of you taking mine. If you kill me, you'll ruin your life. I said, I got 11 brothers. Please, don't change your life. He says, stop shaking, stop shaking. I'm not going to shoot you. I said, well, could you please leave my keys? I'm a long ways from home. I live in the western suburbs. He turned the gun to the other men. He said, put her purse down. They said, what? He said, MF, you heard me. I said, put her purse down. They put my purse down. They took the $500 off the owner and they walked out the door. I'm just saying, at that point in time, when I got up, I must have called every media and police department in Chicago to let them know what had happened to Regina Brent. I'm a princess. My brothers treat me like a princess, only to say that these three black men, who I'm very familiar with, the color of their skin degraded me. I wanted them to be locked up and the key thrown away. I really did. Until this day, when I go into a beauty shop or a salon or a barber shop, I'm afraid for them to put an apron around my neck. I'm afraid for them to let me recline in a seat. I lock the door when I walk in. My point is, that lady was just as helpless as I was that day. But fear mongering is not going to solve the problem. What's gonna solve the problem is diversity, equity, and inclusion. There's a systemic problem in that city where they wake up to condemned housing, where they wake up to no jobs, no economic resources. That doesn't negate the fact that they should rob us. But I'd appreciate it if you squash the fear mongering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Flannery.
Hi, well, I'm back. Um, I serve as an election judge and I know this probably seems kind of relentless and trivial and all, but my husband says that's the kind of person I am. So I wanted to let you know that I do have, we do have a manual. It has six errors in it. They can easily be fixed. So after the last time I was here, I emailed the election division in the county clerk's office and what I got was crickets. No one responded. So I'm going to pursue it and I probably will be back at your next meeting and let you know. The six errors that we found, five related to the kind of the way to register a voter, what kind of ID or what kind of information you need to require from the voter. And it's very chaotic. I mean, it, it's very contradictory what the manual says. And the sixth error is when someone wants to change their mind and turn in their mail-in ballot and vote in person, they are required to turn in not only the ballot, but the envelope. And the manual says turn in the ballot, but it doesn't mention the envelope. And we're all agreed that it is very important that we standardize information and procedure for the election. I mean, it's a nonpartisan issue. We all want to do the same thing and we want to follow the law. And so I'll be back. See you next time.
Magdalena Kalanoshka, Northlake.
Hello, uh, my name is Magdalena Kalinovska. I'm here to address the agenda point for 10 Development, uh, Subpoint D. Um, this is a variation that I am requesting for approval of, uh, shed with our primary structure. The reason why I would like, uh, this variance to be considered approved is the fact that I use the shed to store material, um, tools and equipment to maintain the property. We have other properties around us that are not being maintained currently. And I see the proliferation of poisonous species, standing water with mosquitoes and, um, accumulation of garbage. Um, therefore I try to keep my property as best maintained as possible. Um, the, uh, denial of this variation will, uh, put a practical hardship on myself as well as a financial hardship due to the fact that I've been, uh, affected by COVID recently. Uh, the intention, my, my intention always was and still is to develop a house on this property and live there. Um, just to add, I've never been delinquent on, uh, property taxes on the property. Um, again, I tried to maintain it as best possible and I would really, um, ask you guys to consider my, uh, variation in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and last we have Jax West is here from Lyle, Illinois.
Hi, I would just like to thank our clerk, Jean Kazemerek, and the clerk's office. We've got early voting right around the corner. And being able to vote anywhere, not just your polling place, has been such a big convenience for our voters because not everybody has the time to get to the polling place that's in their neighborhood. They may work somewhere or their school's act, their children's activities with their schools. So I think it has been such a good thing that we can now vote anywhere. Thank you to our clerk.
Okay, that concludes our public comment of those seeking to offer, uh, their thoughts here in person. I'm, uh, aware of the fact that we also have a number of folks, um, who have submitted online comments. So with that, Evan, please proceed.
Good morning, Board members. First comment is from Paula Edgerton. The subject is the horror of UFOs. Comment reads, hello, DuPage County Board. So good to be back. For those of you who don't know, my name is Paula Edgerton. Some interesting facts about me. I am a connoisseur of fine dollar store cheeses. I quite enjoy George Lucas's riveting 1977 documentary, Star Wars, A New Hope, and I'm a an avid believer in unidentified flying objects, whereas they are more commonly known UFOs. Speaking of UFOs, in the past months, I have been painstakingly researching what happened between late June and early July of 1947 in Roswell, New Mexico. For those who don't know, a rancher named Mac Brazel located indisputable proof of non-human life on earth on his ranch in Lincoln County, New Mexico, the wreckage of a real-life UFO. Following this historic discovery on July 8th, 1947, the United States military released a statement stating they had recovered a quote, "flying saucer" end quote in Roswell, New Mexico. The army then swiftly retracted their statement and claimed that it was just a quote, "weather balloon" end quote. As a ufologist, I can tell you, DuPage County Board, that this backtrack by the United States military is false. Following my research, I am both pleased and humbled to inform you that what was recovered in Roswell, New Mexico in 1947 was in fact the wreckage of an unidentified flying object. This knowledge in mind, I write to you today for my big old leather sofa whilst eating my favorite mixed nuts and cottage cheese to urge you, the DuPage County Board, to divert the entirety of this county's budget to the construction of a protective dome that covers the entirety of DuPage County at a cost of $485 million so that in the event of a UFO crash, it would bounce off the dome into neighboring Cook, Kane, Will, or Kendall Counties. The construction of this preventative measure shall be prioritized immediately and whatever kooky Dan Cronin presents today at this distinguished board meeting ought to be thrown out the window. On top of preventing aliens from entering this sacred county, it would also prevent the entry of Cook County criminals. Ladies and gentlemen, this dome is multipurpose. Sincerely, professional ufologist Paula Edgerton. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Cara Di Pasquale. The subject is assault weapons ban. The comment reads, please support an assault weapons and high capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Annie Gray. The subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, I am a mom to two young boys and I refuse to be scared to send them to school. As an elected leader of our, of our community, you have the responsibility to each of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. Please protect your children and our communities. Thank you. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Christina McCormick. There is no subject. The comment reads, I strongly urge you to support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. I'm sick of watching my kids walk to school each morning, wondering if it is the last time I will see them. I'm sick of some subconsciously scouting quickest exits or places to hide when out in public in the event of a mass shooting. I'm sick of wondering if the next sporting event, concert, parade, grocery store trip, or park excursion will end in tragedy. It is time to act and a good place to start is ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. I urge you to direct the county's lobbyists to work towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Megan Moriarty Gerard. The subject is common sense gun control. The comment reads, the events over the last year of gun violence have demonstrated that no community is safe. We must not wait until Hinsdale, Oakbrook, or my home down Clarendon Hills becomes the next Highland Park. I am writing to ask you to support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban. This is not a partisan issue. This is not about restriction on personal freedom. This is about saving the lives of children, mothers, fathers, friends, and family in our community. Now is the time to act. Please support Illinois House Bill 552, which ensures firearms are safely stored. Please support FOID card reforms and mandated training. As an elected official, we are counting on you to make DuPage County a place where children are safe in their classrooms and our friends are safe at the movie theater and our parents are safe in their place of worship. What other issue is more important? That's the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Bruna Burgunder. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, as a resident of DuPage County and a mother of two school-aged children, I support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through county resolution. It is time to take matters and institute change at our county level. It's sad that our kids have to go through active shooter drills in school. We need to make them safe. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Joanne Trumbull. Subject is resolution to ban assault weapons. Comment reads, as a former teacher, I've always been a gun sense voter. Right now, more than ever before we, right now, more than ever before we gun sense voters are done. We are done with thoughts and prayers. We are done with traumatizing our children with school lockdowns and actual school shootings. We are done with living in fear during public events and we are done with our elected officials who refuse to reach across the aisle for greater good and do their job in acting common sense gun laws. I urge the DuPage County Board to pass a resolution to ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. I also urge you to support this at the state level along with FOID card reforms and House Bill 552 mandating safe storage of firearms. The time is now. We are done waiting. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Ann Lund. Subject is gun safety resolution. The comment reads, last year, my son's classroom was the first room near the front door. My first thought was concern over an active shooter entering the school and going there first. An assault rifle could cause devastation within seconds of entering. How sad this was the first thing I thought of. The second thought was how our legislators are not doing enough to protect our children in school. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Karis Tekwani. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, as an emergency medicine physician who has seen the effects of gun violence in the community I serve, I strongly support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. Our children deserve to feel safe in school. Your actions will save lives. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Alice Romano. The subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, please support Illinois House Bill 552, which mandates safe firearm storage, which is part of a Lake County resolution. As an elected leader of our community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. We do not want to sit quiet and wait for another mass shooting to occur. The time to act is now. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Karen Zurgat. Subject is ban on assault weapons, large magazines. Comment reads, you're an elected leader, but this issue isn't about politics anymore. It's about doing the right thing and reaching across party lines to make this about living, breathing human beings. It's about our kids. The time for thoughts and prayers and after another senseless shooting is over. It's time to act before more blood is shed because weapons have fallen into the wrong hands. Please, please support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. Direct our county lobbyists to work towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. Our kids' lives depend on it and you. Act now. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Susan Kazon. The subject is gun violence prevention. Comment reads, to whom it may concern, I urge you to support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. The time for thoughts and prayers is over and you know this. As a parent of three students, I refuse to wait for another mass shooting to occur and implore you to take action now to keep our children safe in school and families safe in places we frequent within DuPage County. I know it's not always easy to reach out to your colleagues across the aisle, but I want you to know that it's important to me. You represent me and our community and we are worth it. As an elected leader of our community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. Please support Illinois House Bill 552, which mandates safe firearm storage, which is part of a Lake County resolution. I'm also asking you to support FOID card reforms and mandated training related to the sale or possession of firearms, which are also part of a Lake County resolution. This is not rocket science. Lake County, Skokie, Highland Park, and Will Matt have all passed similar resolutions. Naperville has passed a ban. Yours in safety, Susan Kazon. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Sarah Robbins. Subject is please pass a resolution for an assault weapons ban. Comment reads, I am writing you today to show my support for a resolution for an assault weapons ban. This resolution is needed to show Springfield and DC that we need to ban assault weapons that are killing innocent people. Nobody's trying to take away the right to bear arms. However, an assault-style weapon is meant to kill. It is not meant for hunting or other recreation. My best friend was senseless murdered outside a million-dollar home 11 years ago. The shooter used an assault rifle. Had he not had access to this type of gun, I am 100% confident my son, my friend would be here today. The shooter sprayed the front door of the house with bullets in literal seconds. My friend was just entering a side door, just the wrong place at the wrong time. My friend was one of the most inspirational people I know, an activist, an educator, and inspiration. My life will never be the same without him and it's time to act now so this does not need to be the reality for one more person. Please act now to save our children and families. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Rebecca Romano. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, I urge you to help families and children of DuPage County to protect us and our children with buildings. I urge you to help families and children of DuPage County to protect us and our children with diligence. Please support House Bill five-fifty-two to mandate gun storage, which can prevent unintended shootings in the home and gun suicide. This will help save lives. As a mother of three daughters in public schools, I beg you to continue this fight by supporting FOID card reforms and mandated training and assault weapons ban to prevent further mass shootings from devastating our communities, as similar measures have been passed in surrounding counties. As an elected official, it is your duty to protect people you represent. Please do not delay. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Audrey Les. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, as elected leaders of your community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. This dangerous devastating public crisis has many moving parts. It is your job to use the tools you have as elected leaders to fight this crisis from all possible avenues. Lake County, Skokie, Highland Park, and Will Matt have all passed similar resolutions. Naperville has passed a ban. You do not have to experience the kind of trauma and grief others have, others feel each day to understand the importance of these measures to protect each other. Voting to protect each other from gun violence doesn't make you politically weak. It makes you politically strong. My cousin was murdered leaving work at Mercy Hospital in twenty eighteen. Our family, like many others, suffer from immense grief and PTSD trauma every day. I wouldn't wish that on everyone. Please protect my family, my children, my community in every way you can. Thank you. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Michael Les. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, my niece was murdered by her assailant using a gun while leaving work at Mercy Hospital in twenty eighteen. The grief and anxiety suffered by me and my family members is relentless. I wouldn't wish this on anyone, yet because elected officials such as yourselves have not personally experienced this unrelenting tragedy, you are reluctant to help. Please help protect your family, your children, your community in every way you can. As elected leaders of our community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. Please support an assault weapon and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. Direct the county's lobbyists to work with, work towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. Support House Bill five-fifty-two, which mandates safe firearm storage. Support FOID card reforms and mandated training related to the sale or possession of firearms. Thank you for your time and efforts. That ends that comment. Next comment is from Megan Martin. Subject, I'm tired of thoughts and prayers. Comment reads, the time is now to ban assault weapons before any other children have to die. There is no purpose of these weapons of destruction to be allowed to be purchased. As an elected leader of our community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. Be the change and do what we elected you to do. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Casey Katz. Subject is assault weapons ban. Comment reads, as a mother and human being, I am begging for your support of an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. Please direct the county's lobbyists to work towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. Time for thoughts and prayers is over and has not worked in the past. Please take action to keep our children safe in school and families safe in places we frequent within DuPage County. I know it's not always easy to reach out to your colleagues across the aisle and I want you to know that your efforts are important to me. Our future is worth it. As an elected leader of our community, you have the responsibility to each one of your constituents to take action and commit to ending gun violence. Please support Illinois House Bill five-fifty-two, which mandates safe firearm storage, which is part of a Lake County resolution. Please support FOID card reforms and mandated training related to the sale or possession of firearms, which is part of a Lake County resolution. Lake County, Skokie, Highland Park, and Will Matt have all passed similar resolutions. Naperville has passed a ban. Thank you for your time and consideration. We will be counting on you to do the right thing. Casey Katz. That is the end of that comment. Next comment from Linda Rothman. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, I'm a longtime DuPage County resident, but this is my first time providing public comment. Violence, especially with assault weapons, has become a national problem. I encourage you as our representatives in DuPage County to do your part to address this horrific issue. I support and hope you will support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. This will allow you to direct our lobbyists to work with state and federal level to create long-term meaningful change. We cannot continue to sit quietly and assume that somehow it will get better or that someone else can take action. The time is now for each of us to do what we can. I am asking for your help. Please support gun safety resolutions. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Ruina Reed. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, I'm the mom of a young toddler and I'm expecting another girl in a few months. I'm terrified for their futures, especially when they start school in a few years, much less circling to concerts or movies. If the tragic shootings in Highland Park showed us anything, it is that mass gun violence can really hit anywhere at any time and having armed police officers is not a deterrent. Please, please take some kind of actions to keep my daughters, their friends, and their neighbors safe. I don't want them knowing firsthand the awful effects of gun violence. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Emily Zhang. Subject is ending gun violence. Comment reads, please take action to keep our children safe in school and families safe in places we frequent within DuPage County. Thanks to you, our elected leaders. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Juanita Marguettes. The subject is DuPage County Clerk. Comment reads, early voting starts next Thursday. We need competent leaders that we can trust. During her tenure, DuPage County Clerk Jean Kazmeric has demonstrated the opposite, incompetency and non-transparency. Clerk Kazmeric has not attended a county board meeting in well over two years. She has not had the decency to show up to work and explain how she failed to meet a deadline with the Illinois Department of Revenue costing DuPage residents up to four million dollars in lost tax revenue. I find this behavior totally unacceptable and am at a complete loss as to why this behavior has been tolerated. I'm outraged that she has the audacity to run for reelection. Evelyn Sangwannetti will present a full-time clerk for DuPage residents. As clerk, she will bring her experience as a mother of three, attorney, former adjunct professor of law, former Wheaton councilperson, former Illinois Lieutenant Governor, and former executive director of Hope Fair Housing. DuPage deserves better. Evelyn Sangwannetti will suit up and show up, vote for Evelyn for DuPage Clerk. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Ying McEwen. Subject is save our children and act gun control reform. Comment reads, we live in a country where anyone could be shot at any time randomly while worshiping God, shopping for groceries, and parading. When I drop my children off at school in the morning, I pray they will come home safely. Now, when I take my family to see a movie, I make them sit nearby the exit when I'm when I'm open in public with my children, I keep looking over my shoulders. We make all the mothers and fathers in this country living in terror. All for what? Military weapons have no place in the civilian world. Second Amendment does not allow anyone to bear any weapons without any restrictions. I implore the county board members to support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution. Please, please, please direct the county's lobbyists to work towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Michelle Howe. Subject is stop gun violence. Comment reads, as a mother of two children, gun violence is my biggest nightmare. I'm grateful that our community is facing this huge threat and ready to take action right now. Please do whatever it needs to guard our beautiful community and protect our families. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Laureen McMahon. Subject is county clerk. Comment reads, I'm writing to express my support for the actions that have been taken by the clerk, Jean Kazmeric, to make voting in DuPage County both safer and more accessible. I think what has been done is a model not only in Illinois but for the country. I would particularly note the new secure voting equipment, the ease of voting by mail, and the ability to vote in person at any voting location in the county, including for early voting. Democracy only works if all of the people's voices are heard, and I commend the clerk and her office for their efforts to make all voices heard. I am grateful. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Margaret Brownlee. The subject is Jean Kazmeric. Comment reads, Jean has shown strong leadership in her duties as county clerk. She demonstrates honesty and transparency and the ability to withstand brutal resistance with grace and transparency at all times. She was instrumental in leading our county and replacing new audible and accurate elections equipment. She has advanced our vote-by-mail options. We now have access to hand-marked paper ballots. She educated and rallies in causes to improve our county and projects that make a difference for all DuPage County residents of all political stripes. She protects and supports her staff and owns all decisions made in her role as county clerk. I believe she is always driven by higher ideals and heartfelt goals. She has regularly responded to phone calls in a personal commitment to listening to DuPage County residents. Please support such a leader, Margaret Brownlee. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Amanda Recupito. Subject, support for Jean Kazmeric. Comment says, I'd like to state my support for Jean Kazmeric, DuPage County Clerk. It has been a huge convenience, not to mention a great step for voting, accessibility, and equity to have a countywide early voting at any polling place as well as easy vote-by-mail options. As a first-time election judge is here, I feel a great pride knowing we have new voting equipment that makes voting safe, easy, and cost-effective, saving the county money that can be spent elsewhere on essential services that help our communities. She's exactly who we need in this position to continue fair and secure elections. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Jennifer Peckenbaugh. The comment is in support of County Clerk Jean Kazmeric. Comment reads, please note my support for County Clerk Jean Kazmeric. Under her leadership with early voting or on election day, we can vote NA DuPage County polling place. We are the only county with this convenience. We need to be sure this is never in jeopardy. Under Clerk Kazmeric's leadership, we now have the most secure voting equipment in the state. This is obviously of the utmost importance. With the new equipment, ballots printed on demand, saving thousands of dollars in printing and paper costs. Vote by mail is even easier than ever before. Vote by mail is an essential tool for equitable access for all. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Laura Temple. The subject is support of voting improvements in DuPage County. Comment reads, thanks to many improvements made by our county clerk, Jean Kazmeric, and the staff of the clerk's office, voting in DuPage County is now more accessible, more secure, and saves more paper and money than ever before. These are improvements that everyone who believes in a free and fair democracy can support and be grateful for. This citizen sure is. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Ann Lee. Subject is ending gun violence. Comment reads, please take action to keep our children safe in school and families safe in DuPage County. I support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban. That is the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Sarah Herman. Subject is gun safety resolution. Comment reads, please take action to keep our children and families safe in DuPage County. I want to feel safe taking my children to large events in this area. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Valley Gupta. Subject is supportive of a resolution to ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Comment reads, if you have children in school, you'll receive the quote "lockdown drill" end quote emails from school detailing what our children now have to train for as part of their school experience. After the mass shooting in Uvalde, there are more disturbing steps schools have to take. We ask that you take action to keep our children safe in school, families safe in the places we frequent in DuPage County. This is not a Republican or Democratic issue. This is about preventing easy access and use of weapons of war that have repeatedly been used in schools, theaters, grocery stores, churches, commonplaces we all go in the county. The time to take action has never been more critical. We support an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution, as was recently passed in Lake County, Skokie, Highland Park, and Will Matt. We also ask the county's lobbyists be directed toward working towards supporting such legislation in Illinois and at the federal level. Please support Illinois House Bill five-fifty-two, which mandates safe firearm storage. We also support FOID card reforms and mandated training related to the sale or possession of firearms, which was part of the Lake County resolution. Thank you for your care of DuPage County residents and doing what you can within your power to reduce mass gun violence.
Excuse me, Evan. I think that concludes our period of time. Thirty minutes have elapsed. So we thank all those folks that submitted their thoughts and suggestions. And so, thank you. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. And a motion and a second, and then I will proceed to read the items into the record. Consent items, A, DuPage County Board, regular meeting Tuesday, September thirteen, twenty twenty-two. B, consent item change orders to various contracts as specified in the attached package. C, payment of claims, oh nine oh nine, twenty twenty-two, auto debit pay list. D, payment of claims, oh nine oh nine, twenty twenty-two, pay list. E, payment of claims, oh nine sixteen, twenty twenty-two, pay list. F, payment of claims, oh nine twenty, twenty twenty-two, pay list. G, payment of claims, oh nine twelve, twenty twenty-two, public works refunds. H, wire transfers, oh nine fifteen, twenty twenty-two, wire transfer. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Members A. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachowski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatori.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Thank you, Board. Move on to the next order of business, Finance. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. I move approval of FIR oh three seven eight twenty-two, acceptance and appropriation of donated funds initiated program twenty twenty-three, intergovernmental agreement in the amount of one hundred three thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatori, and member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three seven nine twenty-two, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the Aging Case Coordination Unit in the amount of six million, three hundred thousand for the period of October first, twenty twenty-two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three eight six twenty-two, resolution approval of the issuance of payments of the DuPage by DuPage County to training providers and youth contracts through the Workforce Innovation and Economic Opportunity Act, the amount of two million, two hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three eight seven twenty-two, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Workforce Innovation, and Opportunity Act, intergovernmental agreement in the amount of four million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three eight nine twenty-two, resolution authorization of the memorandum of understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One Fifty.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three nine oh twenty-two, resolution renewal of group insurance programs.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three nine two twenty-two, resolution approving a two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty contribution for the twenty twenty-two, for twenty twenty-two to the Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three nine three twenty-two, resolution budget transfers from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh three nine four twenty-two, resolution approval of the amendment to resolution FIR oh three four one twenty-two for changes to the intergovernmental agreement with the sanitary districts for the use of ARPA funds.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Oh, I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
You missed it.
That's okay. No worries. I'm going to move to waive the first reading on this. Thank you.
What are we referring to?
The ordinance, the amendment to the county recorder's schedule fees. Yeah, J.
Yeah, okay, sure.
So I need to move to waive the first reading.
There's a motion to waive the first reading. With no objection, has there been a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye. Close nay, the ayes have it. The first reading is waived. Please proceed.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh zero zero five two twenty-two, ordinance amendment to the county reporting fees schedule for fees charged to federal and local agencies.
Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Fine report. Onto the Order of Animal Services, Member Brian Kuduski.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a committee update before we get into the three items. It was probably about seven years ago that Chairman Cronin, you decided to set up your own animal services committee or appointing the committee. We had had a lot of complaints from residents. Only about fifty percent of the animals that were coming into the facility were actually making it out alive. There was a lot of issues going on, so you felt the importance of having a committee solely for that specific animal services. So that was created. I was fortunate enough to become the chairman of the committee. And from that point, we brought in Barbara Hanek. We used to be of Paweck Chicago. A lot of people familiar with Paweck Chicago, but she came in as our vet and has done a phenomenal job over the last seven years. And then brought in Laura Flamian, sitting over there. Laura is running the administration portion of the county, I can, the animal services. I can say today that we're almost at about a ninety percent live release rate, which is one of the top in the country. In addition, over those, that seven years, they built a strong team of all our local community rescues in addition to building a foster program, now that animals are in foster programs. And I spoke about six months ago when we did the Volunteer Appreciation Day, have built a phenomenal volunteer base to the extent of well over a value of a million dollars, if you would value that out for all the time that the volunteers spend. So the staff has done a tremendous job. They're actually a model for other people in the state and the country. One thing that was missing was, you know, the facility that they're still working in. I know we renovated it about five years ago. It's done in the sixties or seventies, but we've had the plan for the new building, which is moving forward. They also work with outside not-for-profit Friends of DuPage, which has donated a number of several million dollars over the years for not only services for animal services, but also a set aside for this capital project. There's been an outreach of new members that have joined that board over the last few years that have done a really good job of outreach to the community. We also work really hard on several pieces of legislation that were passed in Springfield. One that's pretty familiar is the ban on the sale of commercially bred cats and dogs, preference puppy mills. If you go back over a few years ago, it was a nice bipartisan effort over the years. We had a seventeen-one Republican Democrat Board four years ago, and it was unanimous as that was an agenda item. Then it was an eleven-seven Republican Democrat Board. Again, it was unanimous. And this last two years, it's eleven Democrats, seven Republicans, and again unanimous bipartisan support, which unleashed our lobbyists to work on our legislative items. In addition to, many of the communities asked our vet, our panic, to come out and speak at their local village municipalities and the villages of Naperville, Dowders Grove, Lisle, Willowbrook, West Chicago, all banned the sale of commercially bred dogs and cats at their All banned the sale of commercially bred dogs and cats at their facilities. And I was constantly getting calls asking if we could get our vet to speak in front of various municipalities. But all that effort, um, in addition to the legislators in DuPage, who all, both sides of the aisle worked to help, uh, pass those legislation. Um, and we just had last Friday, a couple of our, uh, legislators from DuPage get awarded the Illinois, uh, Humane Society's Legislative of the Year. John Kern was a former county board member. He was a co-sponsor of that. So, um, again, I think a lot of, I guess, uh, thanks goes to our staff. And started with Barb Hannick and Laura Flamian and all of the staff members who've done an incredible job of building this program and bringing all these people together. And of course, um, they're instrumental in talking to donors and securing the four and a half million dollars, which you referred to in your budget that we have additional now that we don't have to take out of the loan. So again, I want to just say a big thank you to the staff. Uh, there's some longtime members over there. Um, I had mentioned Kristy LaCarros, who actually was the acting person when, um, we were out looking for the vet who did a tremendous job keeping everybody together. Um, but there's several of the employees who've been there for a long time. And I think this new building is, is great. It's coming. And again, I think they're still going to continue with the fundraising efforts, um, so they can do more for the, the community. I think it's a, you know, a great history the last seven years and it's thanks to a great staff that we have. So with that, I'll move on to our first item, which is FIR zero three eight five dash twenty-two, which is a resolution to rescind the loan of four point five million dollars added back to the general fund.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Runahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
And Member Hart.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on FIR zero three seven seven dash twenty-two, which is a resolution for additional appropriation for Phase Two Capital Project four point five million.
Leave is granted, Member Kuduski.
And last, uh, move on a change order. It's a recommendation for an amendment to purchase order five four five oh zero 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 one, uh, for a contract issued to IDEX and SNAP S, uh, for our SNAP tests and laboratory services for DuPage Animal Services.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Kuduski, a fine report. Onto the Order of Development, Member Tornatori.
He's not here, so I'm gonna do it. That's okay.
There you go, please.
Yeah, um, I hope he feels better. Uh, uh, quick, uh, one, um, quick comment on item number, which one is D? Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on that. That was a clean and lean property. Uh, so, uh, the staff did take a really long time to get them to take the house down. So they're asking for relief now to keep the shed there, but there is no principal building there, which is, is totally against the code. So I just want to let people know that before they vote on that today. And, and a vote for no, we need to get, uh, fourteen votes to actually get it approved because it needs a three-quarter of majority vote. So moving on to item A, uh, I motion to approve DCR zero three eight eight twenty-two, resolution revision to personnel headcount for building and zoning department for FY twenty-two. Company eleven hundred, accounting unit twenty ten. Motion seconds.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachowski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Shorzy. Member Solomon. Member Tornatori, member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, member Desart. Member DeCiani. And member Eckoff.
Okay, moving on to item B. Motion for approval for DC oh zero zero four nine twenty-two, ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 one one, Musa subdivision to approve the following zoning relief. Rezoning from R one single family to R two single family for three proposed lots.
Leave is granted, member Garcia.
And Room C, DC, uh, motion to approve DC oh zero zero five zero twenty-two ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 three five Johnson to approve the following zoning relief variation to allow a six foot, six inch, a hundred percent closed privacy fence within the ten foot corner side yard setback.
Leave is granted, member Garcia.
Motion to approve DC oh zero zero five one twenty-two ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 three six uh, Kalanawaska to approve the following zoning relief variation to allow existing detached accessory building shed to remain without a principal building. Uh, and this one is the one I explained about, uh, I am asking for a roll call on this.
Leave is.
I'm asking for a roll call.
Oh. There's been a motion and a second, uh, request for a roll call, and there's also folks seeking, uh, some commentary. Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I'm on the development committee, and when this item came up, um, yes, it's against the code. This, this, uh, resident is seeking a variation. And the, the part that, um, I objected to was this woman is doing her best to maintain this property while she's kind of coming away from a clean and lean situation. And, uh, the zoning board of appeals said that she could just order a lawn service or she could have her equipment trailered in every time she needed to maintain the property. And to me, that puts a hardship on, on, uh, somebody to be able to do this when, if she could just keep the shed to keep those, uh, items that allow her to maintain the property there. Um, I, I just think that, that she is seeking a variance and the, the solution from the zoning board was creating a hardship for this individual. And that's why I, I opened the discussion in the development committee on this.
Further discussion, member, uh, Pachowski, followed by member Kuduski. I'm not on development. Were there neighbors or who objected to this? Was, was there neighbors who have opposed this or was any objection to this by anyone? And I, I do remember the, the one instance where a guy came in and he said, I'd had a variance, but I'm just, he just apologized. He said he was sorry. And at the end of the day, we gave him exactly what he wanted because he said he was sorry that he didn't, he didn't know. Had he known, he wouldn't have done it. This is the same, same here. The woman has a shed, she cuts her grass. Let's make it simple. You know, we had that other case and he didn't meet the standard, but he apologized, did a good job on it because everybody changed their mind. We worked something else out, but I think this is a reasonable request and I, I'm going to be supporting it and hoping it passes. Very nice. Member, member, very nice, member Pachowski, member Kuduski.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I also sit on the development committee and, and just come forward. And, um, again, I was one of the, the three a, eyes on it. Um, but I did ask staff the question, um, because the house was knocked down because, and I think we even heard the resident said, or say that today. Um, if the house gets rebuilt, this shed is in compliance and there's no variance needed. And because of COVID, um, and issues that have transpired, and I think she even said today, she's looking to rebuild the house. If the house is rebuilt, then the shed's in compliance. So if we knock, tell them to knock the shed down, they build the house.
Gonna rebuild the shed.
Rebuild the shed, right? And so I understand now that the house is knocked down. It's not in compliant and hence why she asked for the variance, but it appears that the intention is to rebuild it and then it would be compliance, hence why I support it. Um, unfortunately, I think we need fourteen votes, and I know there's three people that aren't here right now. Um, is this something you could do a motion to reconsider if it doesn't pass?
I, um, I would have to take a look because it's a vote on, and then it's a weird, so this area, the law's a little bit strange because it's not just a legislative action. Sometimes you're acting administratively. Um, if you, if you'd like, I think a motion to continue, this would be in order to a time if there's, uh, uh, well, you could table to a date certain, same as to continue it unless you're going to be.
I just don't know what the, the vote's gonna be, and I would go in the negative to bring us back and reconsider if there's more people coming that maybe, I mean, you need fourteen, total. Doesn't matter if there's only fifteen of us here.
I haven't heard any objections yet.
Yeah, well, there were two goals, uh, two goals at development. It was three to two.
Okay, alright.
That's the only reason I ask. I'm supporting this.
Well, if there's a motion to table and it's seconded and we think we can table it to date certain the next board meeting and you think.
Fourteen votes, I'd move it forward, but I'm not sure if that's just my only concern because we had two negatives at development too, it was three to two.
We'll change that. I just heard. So kind, trying to best. Alright, well, what do you want to do? Um, uh, this is your district, uh, member Pachowski. Can I kind of see what the cards are? Is anybody going to vote against this? And if there's more than two, then I'd like to have a table. If we have the support to pass it with fourteen of fifteen, I would move forward on it, but at least give her the opportunity, so. Yeah, so why don't we entertain a motion to table to a date certain, which only requires a simple majority? Does that sound fine? I mean, they're not sure they want to do this just yet. Here. I always try to, uh, appeal to the members in that district, and if the members are supportive of this, I think it's reasonable to support. Even if maybe you voted no in development, I wasn't there, but, uh, I would be supportive of it, especially if the members. Can we have, is there anybody voting against this? Because I don't want to waste, okay, we have one for, one person voting. If everybody else supports it. You do what you gotta do. I mean, I mean, alright, so Paul, you're shaking your head.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just very supportive of our staff and they work really hard on this clean and lean. So I just hate to say yes to somebody when they've been asked to take a shed down and they did not do that. I understand it's in your district. I understand what she's asking for and I know, I, I understand it might be a hardship on them. I just come from, my background is to actually follow the code, so this is just going against every grain I have.
And I, I was moving table.
Yeah, just one question, uh, kind of like a point of order question. If it goes down on a vote, does it get fourteen? So if I vote in favor, but I can move to reconsider it at the next county board meeting or no?
It's just paper. If you're not on the prevailing side.
What is the prevailing side? Because it's, it's kind of.
The prevailing side would be the voting it down.
But I'm still voting aye and on the prevailing side. I mean.
Identify. Right. I would think we'd be better off tabling it because then we have staff to come in. I would like to know that gentleman who came in and said he was sorry, did a great job. I'd like to know more about that case, how that relates to this, because it's the same scenario. I thought it was similar. So I would like to table it because I would like more information on that one case where we kind of worked everything out. And I'm asking that, and it's District One, I think Ashley supports that as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to add my voice of support that, especially looking at the area. And I really appreciate that the homeowner came and explained herself. I think this, this is where the rules shouldn't overweigh logic. And I think we can all be frankly, just good neighbors. I would be beyond infuriated if I was her and was asked, please rip down this down to check some boxes. But once you build a new property, which will benefit all of us through that tax revenue, then you get to spend some extra money to put it up. I think it's inconsiderate. I would hope you'd support District One and, uh, approve this today.
Right, so we're moving on the table.
Yes.
Right?
Are you gonna go with yes?
Rose are, are you sending recognition?
No, thank you.
Okay. So what's your pleasure? I got a motion to table and I think it was seconded. Thank you. Alright, alright. I see it, uh, a, a nice glow coming from member Garcia right now. So that's nice. Member Ozog. Do you have the votes? Okay, I will, I will throw my motion to table on the hope that we have the votes because she is sorry. And that seemed to be the key word, so thank you. Alright, member Ozog.
I just, I would just like to comment. I want to comment though that, uh, in particular, this is part of the clean and lean and taking the shutdown was part of what was supposed to happen here. So I think that makes this, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want this to be considered a precedent because it is different because it's clean and lean and we're trying to encourage people to maintain their property. So there's definitely that element of it, but, um, saying you're sorry and is not a goal of looking for a zoning variance.
She's Polish too, okay?
Well, I do have a Polish surname, so, no, but serious, seriously though, zoning is not about apologies and we need to remember that, and especially with the clean and lean program. So I can, I can change my mind and go along with this.
There's a reason why the process sets this up as the final arbiters. And so we, as elected officials, we can hear human stories and experiences as well. While the government program is really stellar, sometimes there's a little adjustment that needs to be made and the human.
We need to encourage complete compliance with clean.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
But not a blind adherence to a process if there's no human element involved. I think this, we're doing the right thing here. So there's been a motion and a second by member Desart. Um, uh, okay, why don't you make that advisory? So just two things. First, to answer Member Zay's question, your rules provide that where a motion fails for lack of a specific vote requiring greater than a simple majority, either side may move for reconsideration. So either side can move for reconsideration of a vote requiring super majority. As to just a cleanup matter for the folks that write the minutes, there's been a lot of back and forth about motions being made and motions being withdrawn. And I would simply ask the motion be restated by the mover, so there's no doubt as to what you're voting on.
Okay, I'm gonna motion for DC oh zero zero five one twenty-two ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 three six to approve the following zoning relief variation to allow existing detached accessory building shed to remain without a principal building.
Leave.
Leave is granted. Member Garcia.
Okay, I motion for approval of DC oh zero zero five two twenty-two ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 four five ordinance Martins to approve the following zoning relief. Additional use to increase the maximum detached accessory building cumulative area from, from the permitted, permitted eight hundred and fifty square feet to approximately one thousand forty-nine square feet. Existing two hundred square feet shed and propose.
Favorable.
Forty-nine square feet.
Leave is granted, member Garcia.
Uh, finally, uh, motion for approval to DC oh zero zero five four twenty-two ordinance zoning twenty-two zero 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 four four Lancelotti to approve the following zoning relief variation to approve a five-foot fence within the ten foot corner side yard setback.
Leave.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Garcia, uh, standing in and, uh, presenting on Sam Tornatori's, uh, behalf. I hope Sam's feeling better. Moving on to economic development, member Ashley Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on EDP two seventy-one dash twenty-two, approval for a contract purchase order to World Relief Corporation for a youth training program from October first, twenty twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for a not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Solomon.
Aye.
Member Tornatori, member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Kuduski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachowski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Shorzy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. I'm over here. Bye. She, member Chavens did sit over there. Uh, next I move on EDP two seventy-two dash twenty-two, approval for a contract purchase order to Parents Alliance Employment for Youth Training Program for Out of School Youth, October first, twenty twenty-two, uh, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for a not to exceed of two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars.
Leave is granted, member Solomon.
Thank you. Lastly, I move on EDP two seventy-three dash twenty-two, an approval for a contract purchase order to Parents Alliance Employment Project for a youth training program for in-school youth, October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for a not to exceed of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Solomon, a fine report. Onto the Order of Environmental, uh, for a committee update, member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, no items to vote on this morning, but a couple of, uh, things I wanted to bring your attention to. Uh, the first one is that if you missed it in the news in the last week, uh, the company Patagonia, the family has decided to give three billion dollars of their assets and a hundred million dollars annually in their profits to a trust fund to fight climate change. And I, I cannot commend this company enough for their, uh, vision for how we should all be, uh, as citizens of the world. And, and I want to commend, uh, member LaPlante and Joy Hens and Greg Bedloff for working together to develop a program that will, um, help our businesses be better stewards of our environment as well. Um, the other thing I want to mention is that the, uh, I'm sorry, Addison, um, Village of Addison received their. um, Village of Addison received their earth flag and their water quality flag. Last week, we were at their, uh, meeting. And one of the things that they showcased as part of their efforts was, um, that they are now looking at hybrid police cars. So I think if the Village of Addison can do it, the County of DuPage can do it. So let's start looking at those hybrid police cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd just like to mention, as I, as I did in HHS, also JPS, uh, we had big news in DuPage County in the past week. Sterigenics was held accountable for causing cancer. And, uh, the plaintiff prevailed with three hundred and sixty-three million dollars in damages. And this had to do with ethylene oxide being put in the air in a twenty-five mile radius in Willbrook. So, you know, it's a good day for DuPage. It's bittersweet as it is. It's affected so many of our residents. But I just, um, think we all need to, you know, be cognizant of this law case and watch as it, as it probably works through the file. It'll be about seven hundred more, from what I understand. So. With that, I'll move approval of HHS R three eighty-two resolution recommendation for approval of a first modification to emergency solutions. Second, uh, COVID-related understanding with DuPage County Department of Community Services, homeless management information systems, increasing the award by sixty thousand for a total grant award of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And also extending the project completion date through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Um, if I may, uh, at this moment, Member Akoff is granted, uh, joined us remotely. And I need a motion to allow him to participate, uh, pursuant to section seven A of the Open Meetings Act. Um, there's a motion and a second, um, Member Ozog.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we need a reason according to the.
Um, accord, I was just ready to recite it here. So if a quorum of the members of the public body is physically present, a majority of the public may allow a member of that body to attend the meeting by other means if the member is prevented from physically attending because of one, personal illness or disability, two, employment purposes or the business of the public body, or three, a family or other emergency. Member Akoff, do you want to share with us, uh, which one of those three items, um?
Well, I'm at work because we had a little emergency at the office that, uh, needed to be attended to, to help my partner with.
Family, employment purposes. Other emergency. Sort of a interpretive. So yeah, you can vote no if you don't want to join us. Um, there's like more people to participate, represent a democracy. So there's a motion and a second to allow Member Akoff to join the meeting. Uh, is there, uh, is Mr. Pierce, please call a roll. Oh, we can do a voice vote. All right. So, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, the ayes have it. Uh, welcome, Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion and a second on your item, Member Renahan. Uh, Mr. Pierce, please call a roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge. Member Schwartz. Member Salmon. Member Tornatori, Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, Member De Sart. Member Di Ciani. Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. And Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Uh, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you. We move approval of HHS R three eighty-one twenty-two resolution recommendation for approval of first modification to an ESG coronavirus grant agreement with Catholic Charities Project Number E S C V nineteen H, increasing the award by twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and extending the project completion date through December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P two sixty-one twenty-two recommendation for approval of a contract to Healthy Air Heating and Air to provide architectural, weatherization, labor and materials for community services, weatherization program, October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventies.
Uh, leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P two sixty-two twenty-two recommendation for approval of a contract to Healthy Air Heating and Air to provide mechanical weatherization and labor materials for community services, weatherization grant FY twenty-three for the period October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed one million, one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P two sixty-three twenty-two recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to Northwestern Medicine Regional Group for the services of Angelo Nielie M.D., Medical Director of the Care Center for, uh, the period December first, twenty twenty-two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed thirty-six thousand.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
I move approval of an authorization for overnight travel for the senior housing and development planner to attend the Fall National Human Services Data Consortium in Seattle, Washington, October twenty-third to the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two for an approximate amount of two thousand, seven hundred dollars and nine cents.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Onto the order of judicial public safety, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as it, as we heard, I, I counted over thirty, uh, comments today in public comment, uh, regarding, uh, very important subject of gun, uh, assault weapons and void and storage. Um, so I just, I want to acknowledge people, but we hear you on JPS, and I certainly, um, am amenable to using JPS as a forum to have that discussion. Um, and I hope, you know, both sides of the aisle, we can have a reasonable, uh, common sense discussion on that. And I move approval of JSP two sixty-four twenty-two recommendation for approval of a contract purchase order to Railx Conveyor Corporation for purchase of clothing conveyors installation for the Sheriff's Office, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two through September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three for a contract total not to exceed seventy-two thousand, forty-two dollars and eighty-three cents for the sheriff.
Then a motion and a second, Member, for, um, Mr. Pierce, please call a roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge. Member Schwartz. Member Salmon. Member Tornatori, Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, Member De Sart. Member Di Ciani. Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. And Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Renahan.
Um, I move on JSP two sixty-five twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Atlantic Diving Supply Inc. for purchase of an X-ray machine and battery charger for the sheriff, not to exceed forty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of an amendment, JPS R three fifty-seven twenty-two A, uh, Amendment Resolution, JPS R three fifty-seven twenty-two approving the Sheriff's Office execution of IGA with ETSB to provide replacement radios, essentially a correction of an office name, scrivenor error.
Uh, leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan.
Thank you.
Onto the order of legislative, Member De Sart, for a committee update.
Sure, thank you. Um, our next legislative committee meeting will be held on October twenty-fifth, immediately after county board. Um, things that we'll discuss, all of our Springfield lobbyists will be available to discuss the fall veto session, which begins November fifteenth. We'll be discussing the Veterans Assistance Commission legislation. And, um, many of our public commentators will be happy to know we will vote to amend our DuPage County legislative agenda to include, again, timely based on the volume of public comment related to this issue, the state and federal initiative to support DuPage County responsible firearm ownership. The issue, DuPage County recognizes that changes are necessary in state and federal regulation as it relates to firearm safety due to the troubling prevalent, uh, prevalence of gun violation, gun violence in our nation. The recommendation then will be for DuPage County supporting legislation that bans the sale of assault weapons in DuPage County, mandates firearm safe storage, which is Illinois House Bill five-five-two, with reasonable punishments for violations, reforms the void card process, and mandates training related to the sale or possession of firearm. So that will be voted on, on, um, at the legislative committee meeting on October twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, onto the order of Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, by way of committee update, um, committee comment, I want to make a comment as chairman of Public Works. Uh, at our recent special call meeting for, uh, discussing the forty million dollars that we are going to receive unexpectedly, a proposal was discussed, which I didn't know anything about before this meeting, discussing a ten million dollar facility to house special sheriff's department vehicles. And I think many of us were on the board when we've approved several of these vehicles over the last few years. And absolutely, we need to be sure that we protect our investment. But ten million dollars for a garage seemed extremely excessive to me. And going forward, I really hope that the board is brought into these discussions as we discuss. You, uh, discussed earlier today, Mr. Chairman, several ideas about how we would spend this extra money. But I think ten million dollars for this kind of facility is really excessive. Um, I contacted a corporation in Denver that makes steel facilities. Uh, they've just finished a facility just like this for, um, a, um, auto repair company in Ohio. And I asked them to quote me a seventy-five foot by a hundred foot, twenty-foot high building, uh, fifty-year guarantee, you can choose many colors. Um, we were talking about ten million dollars for this garage, this structure, uh, prices out at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So I think going forward, we're definitely going to be discussing this in Public Works. Uh, there's other alternatives for where we can put this, et cetera. But, um, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand versus ten million, I think is something that we need to consider. It is a benefit to us that we're going to be able to do these extra things for the county with this, uh, extra sales tax money. But, uh, we need to all be responsible stewards. Okay, uh, going forward, I'd like to move for approval of FMP zero two sixty-eight twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Kubler Incorporated to provide professional architectural and engineering design services for the care center facility, HVAC replacement, JTK administrative, uh, building HVAC replacement, and various projects on county campus, on the county campus for facilities management for the period September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for a total contract amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars. Professional services vetted through a qualification, qualification-based selection process in compliance with the Illinois, uh, Local Government Professional Services Selection Act.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call a roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Phillips. Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartz. Member Salmon. Member Tornatori, Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, Member De Sart. Member Di Ciani. Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. And Member LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Renahan. Or Member Ozog, forgive me, sorry.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP zero two sixty-nine twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Lamp Incorporated to provide professional construction manager as advisor services for the JTK Administration Building HVAC Replacement, Care Center HVAC Replacement and Preconstruction Services, Door Ten Exterior Replacement at the JTK Administration Building, JTK Front Entrance Security Improvements, and the JTK Third Floor Community Services Intake Project for Facilities Management for the period September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six for a total contract amount not to exceed four million, eight hundred and sixty-five dollar, uh, eight hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Professional services vetted through a qualification-based selection process in compliance with the Illinois Local Government Professional Services Selection Act. This is a partial ARPA item.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Okay, thank you. I move for approval of FMP zero two seventy-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Brightly Software Incorporated for Maintenance Edge Help Desk, formerly Facility Dude, and contact authentic, authentic, authenticate software licensing for facilities management for a three-year period, October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for a total contract amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty-four cents, uh, per quote on the partners' contract.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. Uh, for this item, I need to move to waive the first reading of ordinance P W O.
Second.
Zero zero forty-eight twenty-two.
A motion and a second to waive, uh, the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, the ayes have it. Please proceed.
Thank you. I move for approval of P W O zero zero forty-eight twenty-two ordinance, an amendment to wastewater use ordinance adjusting water and sewer rates.
Uh, leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of P W P zero two sixty-seven twenty-two recommendation for the approval of an agreement between the County of DuPage, Illinois and Sea Orba Group Incorporated for on-call professional engineering services for water distribution and water collection systems for various regions around DuPage County on an as-needed basis from, from, from September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for a total amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars professional services vetted through a qualification-based selection, selection process.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. Finally, I move approval for, uh, over, authorization for overnight travel. Deputy Director of Facilities Management will attend the twenty twenty-two Growing Sustainable Communities Conference in Dubuque, Iowa from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two to October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, participate in a panel on using treasury funds to make government buildings healthier and more resilient. Conference registration, mileage, and two nights lodging expenses include transportation to and from, two nights lodging miscellaneous expenses per diem's, approximate total county cost of six hundred and forty-one dollars, forty-four cents.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much. Onto the order of technology, Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move for authorization of travel approval for an IT staff member to, to attend Illinois County's Information Management Association, October fifth, twenty twenty-two through October seventh, twenty twenty-two for an approximate cost of four seventy-five.
Then a motion and a second, Mr. Pierce, please call a roll.
Member Salmon.
Aye.
Member Tornatori, Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, Member De Sart. Member Di Ciani. Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachowski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And Member Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move, move our authorization of travel approval for IT staff member to attend the Acela Customer Advisory Board Meeting in Salt Lake City, October fifth, twenty twenty-two through October seventh, twenty twenty-two for an approximate cost of fifteen eighty-five.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ashley Salmon, a fine report. Onto the order of transportation, Member Don Pachowski.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm committee update, which I normally don't do. Thank you very much to Department of Transportation. Thanks you, and our committee thanks you for finally, uh, RTA money to transportation. All right. Thank you. And we appreciate that. That gives us projects and roads and safety, so it's all good. And we're very excited. So thank you very much. That being done, we can now go to DTR oh three eight-two dash twenty-two recommendation approval of an awarding resolution, RW Dump and Company for Milton Township Lambert Road Project, estimated township cost four hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand, sixty-eight cents.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Schwartz. Member Salmon. Member Tornatori, Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, Member De Sart. Member Di Ciani. Member Akoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. And Member Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR oh three eight-three dash twenty-two, a license agreement between the County of DuPage and Forest Preserve, District of DuPage County with temporary access within Timber Ridge Forest Preserve, county cost one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Let's leave is granted, Member Pachowski.
Motion to approve DTP oh two six-six dash twenty-two recommendation approval contract binding link to furnish and deliver curb shoes and plow blades as needed for Department of Transportation per contract not to exceed four hundred thousand. Leave is granted. Motion to approve authorization for travel for the Director of Transportation County to travel to Washington, DC September twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth to attend the Surface Transportation Public Policy Hearing. Expenses to include transportation, lodging, meals, estimated county cost of one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And I think Mr. Snyder will also be speaking at that. So that is something that I'm glad that we are doing.
Leave is granted.
And finding my last words, authorizing overnight travel for Senior Professional Travel Champagne, Illinois, October nineteenth through the twenty to attend the Eleanor Traffic Engineering and Safety Conference. Expenses include transportation, lodging, meals for an estimated county cost of five hundred and eighty dollars.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Pachowski. That concludes all our committee reports. Uh, I do want to make a quick announcement. Uh, I have been made aware that our video feed during this meeting has been a little bit interrupted from time to time. Um, the audio is just fine, uh, we are told. So just wanted to reassure those out in the viewing land. Uh, we will post the full video for this meeting, uh, as soon as possible. With that, we move on to the next order of business entitled Discussion. Discussion, we're all familiar with this pursuant to Public Act ninety-nine zero six four six, the pension obligations, uh, obligation projection. The pension obligations, uh, obligation projection required by the local government wage increase transparency act, anyone seeking. Uh, recognition on that order to discuss seeing, uh, not seeing anyone, um, not recognizing, seeing no one, um, hearing no one. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business, anyone seeking recognition, member Desart?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to really, um, say thank you so, such a huge thank you to two of our departments. Um, thank you, first of all, to Laura Flamian and the DuPage County Animal Services for bringing their truck out with adorable kittens to, um. The twenty twenty two Napier Pride Fest Prairie under the, uh, Pride of the Prairie. They were wonderful and they were interactive with the kids with games like the kids love the do you know your poop game? Where you identified a creature with their, with their poop. It was fantastic. So thank you to, um, DuPage County Animal Services and a super huge thank you to Karen Ayala and the DuPage County Health Department. They also brought their caravan out to Napier Pride Fest and they were fantastic because even the last week up to the festival. We were try, I was trying so hard to get the brand new COVID nineteen vaccine and Karen got it. And also there have been other L G B T Q events around the Chicago area that have said that they were going to have monkeypox. Uh, vaccines but did not have enough for the, the number of people who wanted it. And Karen assured me. And, and she rightly so, that we would run out of time before we ran out of monkeypox vaccine for the community. So it was just. So thank you so much to Karen Ayala and the DuPage County Health Department and to Laura Flamian and the, uh, DuPage County Animal Services. They really made our Pride Fest extra great. Thank you.
Fabulous. Anyone else seeking recognition on the Order of Old Business, Mr. Zay, member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I want to thank you, uh, for all your years of service and leadership on the board and your budget presentation today. But I want to put a challenge out to our county board members. Uh, I'm going to seek to lower our levy. We have received hundreds of millions of dollars in federal aid. And with the new internet sales tax and cannabis tax, it's time to pass on some of the savings to our residents. We have a record high in reserve dollars and our residents need help. As has been stated with the current high inflation, the cost of gas, milk. Electricity and goods, uh, everyone's hurting. Uh, the federal government has given this billions of dollars away and now we're paying price in higher inflation. I don't think people really talk about it with the stock market and decline. Many of our seniors who have retired are feeling this effects on the retirement and four oh one K, uh, plans. So what we saw today is we have ten million dollars under budget plus forty million dollars. That's fifty million dollars. We received sixty nine point nine million dollars in property taxes this year. It's going to be my. Uh. Motion and working with our staff to take that down to sixty five million dollars this year, a five million dollar reduction. I think it's time to pass on some savings to our residents because they're hurting at this point. And again, I have seen unprecedented spending here at the county because of the federal money. We've got. Tens of millions of dollars in capital. And if you give government more money, they're going to spend it. So I think this is the right, right time to do it. Five million seems like a lot, but when we're talking about fifty million dollars in extra money, that's ten percent. And I think we can do it at this point, especially with the reserves and the income that's replacing it. And I think our residents need that help. And I know it's not because our, we're such a small part of it, but maybe being leaders and, and we only have two percent of the property tax bill, but maybe being leaders and showing that we're trying to help, maybe others will follow. But again, we have unprecedented capital this year in revenue and it's time to pass it on to some of our residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, anyone else seeking recognition? I think we're still on the Order of Old Business, Old Business, member De Ciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to recognize Sally Carner. I, I wasn't here at the tail end of our last meeting, um, but she's leaving for Homeland Security, I believe, uh, the Office of, uh, for, or at.
Sally.
Yeah, Sally Carner. And, uh, she's done a great job, uh, in, in the office, supporting you and supporting us as a board members. And, uh, I just want to thank her for her leadership and for her pleasant smile and her demeanor and her work ethic. Um, she will be missed, uh, by the board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else on the Order of Old Business, member, uh, Chaplin?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I too would like to comment a little bit on some of the public comment that was made regarding the gun safety. Um, and yes, we do hear you and we have been hearing you. And in fact. Um, some of us have been working on gun safety through the county for a long time. Um, in twenty nineteen, I was very proud to sign on to a letter with, um, my Democratic colleagues, um. Regarding gun safety. It was right after the shooting in El Paso, Texas. And we sent a letter to our, um. Senators Durbin and Duckworth. And we asked them, um, you know, we said thoughts and prayers are not enough. Um, we said at time, the time for action is now. We owe it to the victims to have a vote on laws that will provide for stricter background checks. Mandatory waiting periods, bans on military assault weapons and high capacity magazines. And red flag laws that would help make sure domestic abusers and those who may be a clear and present danger do not possess firearms. Um, and this was signed by myself, member Covert, member Desart, member Ozog, member Renahan, member Rutledge, and member Solomon. So we have brought forward some, um, gun legislation. We, we were able to get, um. The Gun Safety Storage Campaign legislation approved through our legislative committee, um, in August. And we are working hard, um, to make sure, you know, that we do have safe gun laws. And I'm so happy to hear that we'll be, um, having a resolution come out of our legislative agenda on October twenty fifth. So we do hear you and we are concerned, um, just like you are. So I appreciate all of their comments.
Okay, further discussion on the Order of Old Business, Old Business, anyone, anyone move on to the next order of business entitled New Business, New Business, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was remiss in my J P S comments. I did not, um. Inform the committee on something very important that is being rolled out. It is a law enforcement transparency portal. So, um, great work by Anthony McPherson, Tom Ricker, uh, member Solomon, um, working all in collaboration to basically help the public, help law enforcement, help this board. Um, kind of see what is going on in terms of crime throughout the county. Um, I think it's, it's going to be a great tool and I, I think it's going to engender trust. Um, between government and our residents. So I look forward to, you know, everybody, if anybody wants to has not gotten a chance, J P S has, has kind of gotten a, a first look at this. Anybody who hasn't, contact myself or Tom Ricker and we'll make sure that you do get, uh, something so you can make comment on it because it is not, like I said, it's not been officially rolled out, but it's something we're working on right now. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, the Order of New Business, members A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to remind board members that our, uh, quarry tour at, on the Almhurst quarry is this week. There's a, uh, tour for elected officials from eight to nine. Uh, if you're interested, no member Phillips is going and nobody else has signed up, so, um. Uh, I hope, uh, I hope way to be, I know a lot of you have already been on the tour. But it's, it's eight to nine and I won't be there. I'll be appearance weekend, so maybe that will spur more people on the coming, so that will be perfect. There you go. So if you're interested, please contact our director, Sarah Hunt. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else on the Order of New Business? Oh, member Ekoff, hi. Fighting is bad there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to bring this up under new business, but, uh, even though. A member to certain and chaplain have talked about the, uh, gun law under old business. Uh, since that item is going to be discussed at the legislative committee, which that discussion, something I welcome. I wish there would be a review of how that type of law was passed. Oh boy, twenty years ago. And, uh, I think it's constitutional, but I would like them to come up with some information about that, how it was done in the past. And also I've done a little research about how effective that law was in the past, and I think that would also be relevant. Uh, but at the same time, I think people need to realize that guns don't go off by themselves. They go off by people using them. And we've got a law on the books now called the Safety Act that you referenced during your budget presentation. It's going to go to, into effect in about three months. And we've had states attorneys across the state talk about the fact that it's a bad law, both Democrats and Republicans. And it is a bad law and that's why three, two years ago, we tried to pass a resolution to urge the governor to veto that legislation. And three times that, that resolution was tabled. And I'm not going to call out people about who voted what way, but. Uh, I think everybody at this point should join with the state's attorneys. And, uh, maybe bring another resolution urging the governor and the state legislator to repeal that legislation because it's bad legislation. And we knew back then that was bad because the cost was gonna be extremely high. It was passed late in the night. And as the, uh, Will County State's Attorney, who's a Democrat, has stated, it's going to bring about the end of days with letting people out on the streets. We're then going to have access to these guns. We're going to use them again like they used them to get into jail to begin with. Because if you talk to police officers and you talk to sheriff's personnel, they know who the bad guys are. It's not everybody and their brother who's getting guns and using them. It's a small percentage of the people that repeatedly do things and that's why they're in jail pending. Uh, hearings and that's why bail for them is set high and it shouldn't be a no bail system. But the biggest impact, which I didn't realize at the time when that law was passed, is it's decimated the morale of our, of our public servants, the police and the sheriff's department. And as we've all seen through the information that we received today. It, it used to be you'd get hundreds of people applying for very few jobs and now we have to beg people and increase salaries at another extremely high cost. To our taxpayers to bring people back into the system that we used to have a lot of people working towards. And so we've not only made our, our society less safe, but the people who are there, were there to protect us. Don't want to do it anymore because they're all, they're all retiring or they're not even applying for the jobs. So if we're going to have a discussion about gun safety or gun, uh, banning assault rifles, which I said, I, I somewhat am very interested in. Cause I've done research on it and I sort of agree with it. You better have a discussion about putting the people who use those guns in jail and keeping them in jail. So I hope you add that to your agenda.
Very good. Anyone else on the Order of New Business, member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. I just feel I have to respond to some of what member Ekoff said. Um, our own state's attorney, Bob Berlin, does not favor, um, repealing the law. He favors working with, um, our state legislators to improve the law. And he is on record saying that, so he, he, I don't believe he would be in favor of a resolution, um, killing the Safety Act. Also, the Safety Act does a lot to help our, um. Law enforcement. It provides mental health training. If we have the body cameras that we've had our state's attorneys, they have proven to be beneficial to our police officers, making their cases stronger. Um. You know, the Safety Act, um, I just read a story in Lake County where two young individuals were released on bail for, um, suspicion of murdering a man in the forest preserve there. And they were let out on bail. This system of no cap bail is going to make it more equitable for people. So if somebody is arrested, it's going to put more onus on judges. Yes, they're going to have to go in front of the judge and the judge is going to have to look at a lot of information and decide. Whether or not that person is a threat or a flight risk. And that is how people are going to be determined if they're detained or not. Um, but there's so much information and I believe somebody came and spoke earlier, oh, it was, uh, Regina Brent talked about, you know, um. Scaring people and using scare tactics. And I think as elected officials, it is our responsibility to not fall into that trap. Um, I think putting the facts out, I think, you know, if there are areas that that Safety Act needs to be improved, let's improve it. Um. But to try to scare people, they're criminals are going to be on the street. We had our own chief judge here a couple of weeks ago saying that every defend, every person in that jail. Starting January first will have a hearing as to whether or not they will be released. Um, so it's not going to be December, uh, January first, the doors of the jail are open and everybody is getting out. They will go before a judge and have a hearing. As to whether they are to remain in jail or whether they can go out, um, and wait for their trial. Um, so I just, I just think it's really important. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, members A.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there's a lot out there about this and, you know, my suggestion would be maybe the next county board meeting. Have the state's attorney and the chief judge Colin actually give us their interpretation of how the Safety Act is going to affect us here in DuPage County. I think that might be a good thing because there's a lot of opinions going back and forth. So I'd like to hear from the experts, probably the state's attorney and the chief judge would be, be good to hear from.
That'd be good. I agree. Um, anyone else for the discussion, uh, on the Order of New Business, seeing none, hearing none. Uh, we do not have anything to come before us on the Order of Executive Session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, October eleventh at ten a m. All those in favor say aye. O's nay, the ayes have it, meeting adjourned.